All right. Good evening, everyone. I want to thank you all for joining us tonight for the inaugural meeting of the School Board Transformation Task Force. I see we just started the recording there. I will go back there just once again, welcome everyone and say good evening. Want to thank you for joining us tonight. I want to thank you really for taking the time out, not just for this evening, but to serve on this task force as we go forward over the next several weeks, having an opportunity to have all of you study and review the governance structure of our school system and ultimately offer recommendations on a path forward. And we will talk in a little bit more detail about some of that as we go through the meeting. But I just want to start off by introducing myself. For those of you who don't know me, I'm John Erson, the Deputy Chief of Staff in the Office of the County Executive. And we're joined by a few other members from the County Executive's team this evening. Just like to ask each of them to introduce themselves. Erica, if you want to start.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Erica Barry Wilson. I serve as Chief of Staff to our DCAO for Health, Human Services and Education. And I serve as the Education Liaison for the County Executive.
Rhea. Rhea Harris. I am the Director of the Office of Intergovernmental Affairs. It's a long title, but I'm just a lobbyist. And the staff people who are on the call will serve as staff with this task force too.
So yeah, Ron, go ahead.
Hi, Ron Young, also with the Office of Intergovernmental Affairs, the Senior Legislative Officer for the County Executive.
And Patrick.
Patrick Galver. I also work on IGA with Rhea and Ron.
Okay, thanks. Thank you, everybody. So that is our team from the County Executive's Office, who is on the call tonight. And we certainly bring you greetings and thanks on behalf of County Executive, also Brooks. And to those who are watching us tonight, to the citizens who are watching us tonight on YouTube, we thank you for joining us and look forward to having the opportunity to hear from the residents as we move forward in the task forces. One of our meetings will focus solely on public input. But with that, we are going to take an opportunity certainly to hear from each of our task force members who have joined us tonight. There are a few who have not signed on yet, but as we go through, we'll make sure to acknowledge them if they are not able to sign on with us tonight. But with that, I will turn things over to Rhea, who is going to talk a little bit about, I know all of you have received the the executive order that created the task force, and Rhea is going to talk a little bit about the scope behind that executive order and the work that will be coming from this task force.
As soon as I unmute myself. And I know everybody received it because I sent it out, but I want to share a screen so that people can see it as we talk about it. There we go. So this is the task force executive order that the County Executive signed. It has a number at the top, but it's just the number of executive orders in this year of 2021. What we're looking at in the scope is what we kind of want you guys to do as we go along. We want to look at best practices, best shape and format for a school board. I should say a Board of Education, whether it be changing the format, whether they be all appointed, all elected, a hybrid system, whether we have the right number of people, whether we are paying, you know, our school board members, the appropriate amount of money in order to generate good membership. We also want to give an opportunity for presentations. It's not really worded in the executive order, but we want to give an opportunity for presentation from other school board areas, similar situated counties or cities that have kind of the same makeup of student population and see if they have some best practices, lessons learned, so we can share those as well. We made a good effort in order to get a good cross-section of the county's representation for this task force. We've got educators, we've got people that have worked with school boards. We also have people that are members because they have children or have had children or citizens in the county. We also got some members from the corporate area as far as like Mr. Harrington from the Chamber of Commerce and others, so that we can get a good cross-section about how we build a great school board. So we're in effect now, the work group will come up with recommendations hopefully by January 14th of 2022. And then we will see what we do from there. Any questions? And like I said, everybody has their own copy of this now, and it will also be posted on our page.
Thank you, Rhea. Now, the the purpose of tonight's meeting, certainly we we have a, as Rhea noted, we have a very good group with a lot of combined experience in these areas and in areas even outside of education that we think are very important to to hear from and to have those perspectives. So what we wanted to do with this initial meeting tonight is just have the opportunity to ensure that everyone has a chance to meet each other and and just talk a little bit about themselves. But what I'll do first is I will turn things over to Dr. Sean Coleman from Bowie State, who will be the Chair of this task force. And we'll hear some comments from him. And then from there, we will go around and just give everyone an opportunity to introduce themselves.
Thank you so very much. I'm Sean Coleman. I am an Associate Professor at Bowie State University in the Educational Studies and Leadership Department. Many classes that I teach centered around social justice, actually with classes like race and racism, the seminar on African American experience, looking at special topics in social justice, as well as I teach classes around research, statistics and analyses and other courses with with regard to educational leadership. My research focuses on the schooling process and closing opportunity gaps for all students, all children, in particular, though, those who are traditionally marginalized through racially, ethnicity and culture, for that matter. I am excited to be here. I am humbled. And I see myself less of a leader and more of a facilitator among leaders, right? So thank you so much. We've been giving our charge. I'm excited about that charge. I'm excited about getting my hands dirty with you figuratively, not literally, but looking at best practices locally as well as nationally and also taking those best practices, seeing to what extent they fit our situation as we're told. But also looking at best practices within our county, looking at contextual factors within Prince George's County as well, seeing to what extent those fit and doing that through a collaborative effort with you. That being that we would join in subgroups, relying on our expertise within our whole group and and giving everyone in within subgroups, everyone in particular stakeholder groups, if you will, a voice. And then bringing those sort of issues to the whole group for everyone in the group to see and make decisions. And moving forward to that with that with consensus, if not full agreement. Again, friends, my new friends, I'm excited about this, this opportunity. I really do think that we'll get this. We have an awesome opportunity to at least propose, and that's all we're here to do, is provide a proposal on how and to what extent our school board should can be adjusted, refined or changed. And with that, I'll hand it over to my rock star team.
So thank you, Dr. Coleman. So I think what we'll do is we'd like to take an opportunity to hear from each of the members who have joined us tonight. And I believe that we have all of our members, I believe there are two members who are not on with us right now. So we'll we'll certainly acknowledge them as we go through. What I'm going to do is just go around to the group based on how I I see you on my screen. So that that's the order that we're looking at here. And I'm going to start at the top of my screen with Ms. Laverne.
I knew you'd do that, John. Well, greetings, everybody. Some of you I know. Donna Christie, do you remember our times together in IEP meetings?
I do.
So this is the beauty. I'm a retired school counselor. I was in Capitol Heights for a long time. And then I retired out of Rockledge Elementary School in Bowie where I live. But ever since, I've been involved more in the environmental and aspect with all the schools in Bowie and on occasion with the county for environmental efforts. But I continue to love working with the children as I can. And I will confess that I have a great concern about the school board and just how it's operating. And I think one thing for me is to have it clarified exactly what its purpose is and how they go about doing that. So I look forward to sharing with the rest of you and getting to know those I don't know.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll go next to Mr. Wallace.
Hello, boys and girls. My name is Alton Wallace. I'm a farm board from New Bern, North Carolina. Moved into DMV in 1969. Most of you were not born. I moved to Prince George's County in 1974. I have two daughters that were brought up in the Prince George's County schools. In fact, they went to college in Prince George's County also at University of Maryland. I'm a retired aerospace engineer. I've not had an lot of involvement with schools, but I've had a lot of involvement with analyzing stuff, whether it's airplanes or constitutions for churches. I did undergraduate North Carolina ANT in Green Star Engineering Mathematics. Then I did a masters at Penn State and then a PhD at University of Maryland. So I'm a retired engineering mathematician guy. And I I look forward to working with you guys. I I spent all my life on airplanes and ships and stuff. And it's great to work with people once in a while. So thank you very much.
Hey, thank you. We'll go next to Ms. Gamble.
Oh, good evening. It is a pleasure to see some of my friends and get to know new ones. I am a local business owner in Prince George's County. I also currently serve as the President of the Prince George's County Association of Realtors. And as you know, education impacts what I do every day. It is a constant conversation that we have specifically in Prince George's County. So I am just thrilled and so excited to serve in this capacity to help move our county forward.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Rhodes.
Sure. So good evening, everyone. Christian Rhodes. It's kind of weird being on this side. I professionally grew up in Prince George's County, particularly around education, particularly around the school board. I spent time as a political director with PGCE and MSEA or MST A at the time. Spent some time at the County Exec's Office with Sharon Baker, formerly Chief of Staff for Prince George's County Public Schools, and now serves as Chief of Staff for the Office of Elementary and Secondary Ed and Senior Advisor to the Secretary of the U.S. Department of Education. Most importantly, and for the purposes of this task force, I come to this as a parent of a four-year-old, Judy Hoyer-Monasor, and as a taxpayer and a homeowner in this community. So look forward to the conversation. I will officially, just for the record, John, Erica and Rhea, I will take off my hat as a U.S. Department Representative as I'm required to do, and hopefully I can bring some context to today's conversation and future conversations. Look forward to it.
Thank you. Happy to have you. Ms. Smith.
Good evening, everyone. Greetings. Thank you so much for the opportunity to be on this board. I bring to you, gosh, a wealth of knowledge about Prince George's County because I grew up in Prince George, Prince George's County and graduated from Northwestern High School. And you would be happy to know that I work at Prince George's Community College as I am the Director of the Campus right there in the College Park Hyattville location. So it's really a great place to to work as well as to help the community. In addition to that, I bring a strong passion and love for Prince George's County as I am a proud product of the county. And I, you know, am excited to contribute the best way that I can. But I am too very concerned as a graduate of the county and now as a representative of the community college system to see the changes that have been that have occurred over the years with our youngsters. Because I'm I am I'm at the pulse every day of of the opportunity to produce our productive citizens, especially in Prince George's County. And lastly, I you I would, I come to you with a wealth of diversity as a Latina and and bring that that knowledge to you and some of the challenges and some of also the opportunities that that we have. And I would like to see more of an opportunity for more inclusion and equity and diversity among this group, not only for this group, but I see a wealth of diversity. I would like to see more Latinos in this group, not just me out there. But but that is why I'm at the table. So thank you so much. I'm excited. And let's get the work done.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Harrington.
Good evening, everyone. I'm David Harrington. I'm President and CEO of Prince George's Chamber of Commerce and delighted to be here and look forward to the conversation. I I am very passionate about our children. I think that they are our greatest asset in Prince George's County. And to the extent that I think communities are defined by how we treat our children and how our children walk across our communities. And so like many of you, I want to so begin to focus our community conversation around and how do we sort of build this system that's certainly focused on our children and focused on their well-being as we begin to define an optimal community. As one who is a leader in the business community, like Melanie and and others who are on the call, I I come to this because our economy is is truly dependent upon the success of our school system. I think there are two, two things that our economy is dependent on. One is how safe our communities are and the other is how is how highly functional our schools are. And people make decisions on whether or not they come to Prince George's County based on those two factors. And if one of those factors are misaligned, then they will not come to Prince George's County. And Prince George's County not realized its greatness that that it should be. As far as background is concerned, I have a history in public service in Prince George's County. I started out as Mayor of Blainsburg. And actually, we were successful in bringing another new school, two, two new schools in Blainsburg that really helped, again, define our community. I then was fortunate to be elected to the County Council and served two terms. And and then then was appointed to the State Senate. So I bring that sense of policy. And I could tell you at each stage, particularly at the County Council level and the State Senate level, the two items that really dominated our budgets and our resources was education and public safety, and then I would say maybe the background of health. And so we are investing a lot in our schools and that and that our community deserves a high return of that investment in a way where we're seen as one of the high-performing communities, not only in the region but in the country. And this discussion, I think, will focus on hopefully one of our most wonderful assets in a way where then we realize then our our intentions. Not to call anybody out, but good to see Melanie Gabu. Congratulations on your candidacy as President of the Realtors. Look forward to working with you. And of course, my LGW classmate, Christian Rhodes. Enough said. And but look forward to meeting and working with all of you. So, thanks.
Thank you. Dr. Christie.
Good evening, everyone. I am Dr. Donna Christie, President of the Prince George's County Educators Association, representing our about 10,000 certificated employees. My background is that I was a school psychologist for 24 years. And my kind of frustration with the special education process and understanding that sometimes it's not a child with a disability, but a system with a disability and policies that are disabled that are the problem with our school system led me to get my PhD in public policy and administration because that's where the true answers lie. And so obviously, the school board has a direct impact on my members as well as our community, our students that we work with and serve every day. And the functioning of the school board is vital to everything that my members do all day, every day, often 24 hours a day. And so I look forward to helping in this process to hopefully resolve maybe some of the issues with our school board and develop a school board that will work and function better for our educators and our students.
Okay, thank you. Ms. McCallister Jacobs.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Regina McCallister Jacobs. I've spent the last five years as the Chief Transformation Officer for the National School Boards Association. And in that role, I have crisscrossed the country far too much. But my primary role has been around educational equity and diversity and inclusion. And it's been at the policy level, quite frankly, sharing data with school boards across the country about the students that enter their buildings and how their policies do not reflect or perpetuate inequities in education. And I've been doing that after serving 10 years and survived with the battle scars to prove it on the Prince George's County School Board for 10 years and enjoyed that time. And I will say that prior to being on the board, I also served as a hearing examiner. So I got the opportunity to really see what was happening with children in discipline measures and things like that. And that passion was just really, I think that's what led me to run for the school board. But I worked 23 years in corrections. So I also got to see what was happening with people who weren't necessarily getting the education that they needed and the outcomes that come from that. So that's how I show up here and I'm delighted to be a part of the group and would like to offer any help that I possibly can. Thanks for inviting me.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Owusu. And I apologize, PK, if I did not hit that exactly right.
You did, John. Thank you. It's a pleasure to see so many familiar faces on the Zoom call. My name is Paquia Owusu, formerly known as PK. I currently serve as the Managing Director of Legislative and Political Affairs for the Maryland State Education Association. We are the largest professional association in the state, representing over 76,000 educators. On a personal level, I'm a Prince George's County resident and a proud alum, alumna of Prince George's County Public Schools, Go Raiders at Eleanor Roosevelt. I, in terms of background, have had an opportunity to serve on the federal, state and local level on policies, specifically education policy. And as a county resident and homeowner, I also have a vested interest in the education of our students and in how our education affects, as many of you have said on this call, every factor of everyday life in Prince George's County. So I'm really excited to be here with you all and get to work.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Green.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Courtney Finkley-Green. I am a parent of a child who attended PG County Public School. I'm also a parent of a child who has exceptionalities. And more importantly, I am a proud Prince Georgian. The one thing that I can say is I am very happy to be a part of this because in order to have a great school board, it must align with great policies. And I'm very excited to be here to do the work. The way I got into education and making sure that, you know, I understood how it worked, not only from a parent's perspective, an educator's perspective, an adjudicator's perspective, is because I saw what parents needed in regards of understanding the legalities as well as understanding how they need to be a voice for their child. So for me, I'm here to be a voice from a parent's perspective, educator's perspective, so that we can make sure that that people who are at risk, children who are at risk, have what they need to be successful as well as at our school board lines with that. So we can make sure that we can have children that will be strong for the future of Prince George's County as well as joining the workforce and attending college. So again, thank you so much for this opportunity and let's get, let's get to work. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And lastly, this evening, Ms. Reed.
Good evening, everyone. I apologize for not being on Zoom, but I'm out of the country and I could not get it to connect. My name is Doris Reed. I'm the Executive Director of the Supervisor Administrator Union in the school system. This is my 30th year in this position. I've been here through 11 superintendents and numerous board members. So I have a little bit of background with knowing what the boards have done, what works and what doesn't. And I I hope to bring that to the group. I graduated from the University of Maryland at College Park. I have my bachelor's. My masters is from the University of Massachusetts at Amherst. I'm a certified paralegal. I'm also the National Liaison for the American Federation of School Administrators. So I deal with boards of education in other districts. So I also have that experience. And I look forward to meeting everyone and working with you because I think we really have to get on this and get this board straightened out once and for all. We've been through too much back and forth for too many years. It has to be fixed because we have to serve our children. And it makes life hard for everyone that's working in the system.
Okay, thank you very much. And thank you for joining us from a distance. Very much appreciated. There are three other members of the task force who were not able to be with us tonight, but we certainly want to acknowledge them. We have Linda Thornton Thomas from the NAACP. We have Nikisha Yates, who is a former teacher and current parent of a student in the school system. And Bishop Kevin Gresham, who is representing the faith community. So we look forward to having them on our next meeting next week. As we'll be moving forward, as we talked a little bit earlier tonight, tonight was the introductory meeting and going over some of the policies and procedures. Next week will be our first official work meeting. So we'll, I'll turn it back to Rhea here in just a moment to talk a little bit about that. But before I do, I just want to talk a little bit. I know we've had the opportunity to talk about scheduling. Obviously, this meeting tonight, we are here on Wednesday night at six from 6:30 to eight. And this is going to be our regular meeting time. The one time that we won't meet like this is the week of Thanksgiving. That being a very short week and a week where a lot of people are traveling and have holiday plans. We will not have a full group meeting that week. We're also taking a look at the week leading up to Christmas and the week between Christmas and New Year. So we'll be reaching out to you to check everyone's schedules for those weeks to see if we need to move the meetings off of the Wednesday time for those couple of weeks. If not, then we'll we'll keep them there. But if we need to be flexible with the holidays, we certainly will be. And one of the meetings, as I, as I mentioned a little bit earlier, and certainly want to want to repeat this for those citizens who are watching us online this evening, we will have a session that is dedicated to to hearing from the public as to your thoughts on on the governance of the school system and where we should be going from here. Our plan right now is to host that session on Wednesday, December 8th. We will likely start that meeting a little bit early, it's a little bit earlier at 6:00 PM so that we have more time to hear from everyone. And within the next week to 10 days, we will be sending out information similar to how we broadcast the notice for this meeting this evening, giving everyone an opportunity to sign up with a link. So please be on the lookout for that in the next, I'd say, about week to 10 days. We will have that out to everyone. So with that, before we conclude tonight, I want to turn it back to Rhea, who was going to walk through some of the administrative support issues that we just want to make sure everyone is clear on.
Sure, John. Thank you. So as we go along, we will be posting this meeting and other information about this group on our dedicated page on my PGC. My PGC.com, which will be entitled The School
Is it mypgc.com, which will be entitled "The School Board Transformation Task Force Page." We will be posting agendas, any documents that people want to send into us that they want to be available to the public will be posted on that website as well. For the task force members, we will have a repository of information notes from meetings, subgroup meeting notes, a running list of recommendations as we put them together in our repository that we will build on Microsoft Teams. And you all, as members, will have access to that repository of information. So, as soon as we get that together, that will definitely be sent out to you, as well as now to ask, access that. We will be working on minutes from the meetings. All of the meetings will be live streamed on our YouTube page, as well as we will type up minutes from the meetings, and they will be available for approval for the task force at the next following meeting. So, as soon as we get started, we'll get that done. The other thing I wanted to mention is there will be, in the repository, several maybe reports or documents that people may want us to review and discuss. And so, that also will be in the repository. We want to make this an interactive group and meeting. So, if you have suggestions and, like Ms. Jacobs may have suggestions for other school boards across the country that are similar situated to us, if you think that there's somebody we should reach out to, to have them do a presentation on how their school board works, or what lessons they learned by putting together their school board, we'll take recommendations. Anything like that, if a member wants to suggest, we definitely will do the reaching out and contacting people for you, if you'd like us to do that. And we can schedule, you know, which meetings people can come to. We want to start with the first meeting with maybe some historical knowledge of Prince George's County Board of Education. And we are setting a couple of people up to talk about that. And then also, we would like to hear from the CEO of the school system about how the school system works with the Board of Education. Other than that, I think that's kind of all I got right now. I think I got contact for everybody. And so, anything else that may come up in the next couple of days, I would definitely send out.
And yeah, and, and I know as, as Rhea mentioned, as we're, we're just finalizing the, the technology side where we're going to house the documents and such. Everyone should have received a copy, as Rhea said, of the executive order. And I believe Erica and Rhea, as well as the report on HB 1107, which was the legislation from 2013 that created the, the current board structure that we have here in Prince George's County. And then certainly, as we have guest speakers, guest presenters, just so the, the public is aware, just to reiterate what Rhea was talking about, will, all of that will be posted, the meeting minutes, recordings of all of the live meetings, as well as the documents I mentioned, which are already there on the webpage. And the, the, any presentations that are given as a part of the, the meetings will also be posted there. And the, the direct address to get there is C E X dot my P G C dot U S. Once you get there, you will see the tabs where you can get to the task force, and you'll see the page for the task force, and that is where all of that will be housed. We certainly encourage our, our residents to, to visit that page for more information. And again, to, to be on the lookout for the, the meeting where we will be taking public input. The one other thing that I would say before we will just open up for, for any questions, if anyone has any, as Rhea was saying, you know, we, we want to provide information to you that you can take a look at, that we think is helpful from a historical perspective. We also want to provide some of those guest speakers that, that we think can provide good information for your discussions. But certainly, if there are, if there's information that you would like to look at, if there's information that you would like to, to share with the group, you know, you can provide that to us, and we can make sure that that gets on an agenda. We can help gather information that you may be seeking. I know as we are going to be studying compensation and, and other areas like, and other issues like that, there may be some additional information, obviously, that we want to take a look at regionally, nationally. So, we can certainly help gather that information and would certainly ask for any information that, that you have to, to help put that together as well. And I think you can certainly, as, as Rhea is sending out emails, you can certainly work through Rhea. But if we want to keep everything together, I think it would be good as you all will have each other's contact informations. If Dr. Coleman is good with it, to, to work through Rhea and Dr. Coleman as, as the Chair, so we can help gather everything and keep everything uniform. Because I think it is our hope as we go forward into the, the future meetings that we'll have presentations and information to discuss that really will allow for good discussion between the, the group as to, you know, all of the areas that, that you're going to be reviewing and having the opportunity to, to weigh in on with your recommendations at the end of this process. So, with that, Erica, Rhea, if there's anything that, that we've left out, otherwise, certainly would like to just take a few minutes, if any of our members have any questions for us this evening.
Okay, the first thing I'm gonna do before we go to questions is have you repeat the website, because you said it kind of fast.
Okay, thank you. So, that is C E X dot my P G C dot U S. That takes you to the, the County Executive's page on the county website. And once you get there, I'm just going to walk through this real quick, so everybody has it. Once you get to that page, on the left-hand side, you will see the, the tab labeled Initiatives. When you go onto that tab, you will see the, the dropdown that comes. And the first one in that list is Board of Education Task Force. That takes you to the dedicated webpage for this task force. That is where you'll find all the documents that are, are discussed during these meetings. It is where you'll find the recordings of all the meetings and the meeting minutes. So, it's a great place to keep up with everything that's going on if you're not able, for the general public, if you're not able to attend a meeting.
Thank you. Now, yes, Mr. Harrington?
Oh, thanks. And, Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. I just wanted to state a couple of things. I think it might be helpful, maybe at our next meeting, to begin to, you know, frame the discussion as we're hearing some of the speakers. So, John, you mentioned, you know, one of the issues might be compensation of the school board. The other might be looking at the bylaws. The other might be, you know, touching the hairy issue of whether or not we have a hybrid, hybrid or elected school board, or a full-appointed school board, you know, what, what's best. So, I think for the group, it might be, I mean, I just named those three, but it might be helpful for the group to somehow engage in what I would call, what are the salient issues that certainly the task force will take up, so that then when we hear the speakers, then we have a frame through which we're listening to the speakers and then, you know, at some point have discussions on those sort of salient issues. And the, the only other thing I would say is, it, it might be helpful, and no, for me, I don't mean to speak for anyone else on the task force, but it would be helpful for me to look at what is, what are the bylaws of, of, of the school board? And that might be a discussion that we have is, to what extent are the bylaws adequate, inadequate, and what suggestions would be made to, you know, change those bylaws? So, two things. One, getting a copy of the bylaws. And two, it might be helpful to, to, let's say, come up with five issues that the group is going to coalesce around. So then, and we have a timetable, you know, Mr. Chairman and John, we have a timetable where we will certainly address those issues in the form of a recommendation to the County Executive. So, I just throw that out there as a means of, they're carrying on the business so that then we can get to the point where we are coming to some set of recommendations.
Thank you for your leadership on that, Mr. Harrington. Covering the topic areas to include bylaws is absolutely definitely something that we want to discuss next. And I appreciate you offering that we need to have a lens on how are we listening to our guest speakers and, and our document review. So, absolutely, I'm taking that into a strong recommendation, strong consideration. Thank you.
No, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I really appreciate that.
You can also call me Sean, too, if you ever feel.
Sean, okay, Sean, you know, I'm also on the Board of Visitors. I love Bowie State.
Nice.
Oh, Bulldogs, right?
BSU?
You know.
Anyone else?
That was, that was wrong. It's BSU, yes, BSU. I went, I, I answered you as if I was from Howard, which I am from, so I apologize.
Look, I answered the Howard University also. I took, I did two tours there, so it's okay.
Oh, there you go. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else?
When he was giving out the email address, my screen froze and I missed the letters. So, C S X one more time.
John?
Sorry, I was muted there. I apologize. Sure. So, C E X dot my P G C dot U S.
Right, good, I'm good.
And Will, and, and, and Mr. Wallace, all of the, you know, certainly all of the documents, you know, we'll, we'll be making available to the, the task force. You know, the webpage is a great resource. We are going to create, as, as Rhea said, we're, we're finalizing the, the Microsoft Teams format where we're going to host all the documents. And yes, thank you, Dr. Christie. Dr. Christie posted the, the link in the chat for anyone who needs it. So, Will, so that the task force members will have all those documents. The website is a great place for the, the community to go take a look as well. But so that's, we just want to make sure everybody has that. Okay, well, if there are no other questions, obviously, one of the, the immediate follow-ups that we'll do, we, we will have the, the agenda for the next meeting out to everyone. I believe by the end of this week, we should have that ready to go. And we will also work on, obviously, getting a copy of the bylaws to share with the group ahead of the next meeting, as well as getting these, these meeting minutes typed up, so we can just go through that process quickly as we start the next meeting. And then certainly look forward to getting down to what should be a very, I, I think, a very robust and, and, and good discussion on, on the different issues that, that this is, this group is going to take a look at. All right, so, Mr. Chair, as we, as we close out, any, any last words this evening?
Thanks for the opportunity. I think you guys covered it all. I, I, I do believe this is a rock star group. I'm excited. I think that we'll get the work done. I think it will be a robust discussion. And it sounds like to me that everyone has, you know, a, a very altruistically intrinsic motivation to get this work done. So, I appreciate everyone. I'm more so a facilitator or air traffic controller, if you will, and will, you know, do our best to get this done, if not, maybe even early. Who knows?
We look forward to it.
Well, thank you, everyone. We thank you again for your time. We'll be following up with, with the information we discussed this evening. And then, you know, always available during the week, leading up to the next meeting. And otherwise, we look forward to seeing everyone next Wednesday. Everyone have a good night.
Great, thank you.